Stand for the pledge.
But.
Budget legislation to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in one land, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mark Serwick.
Here.
Greg Scott.
Here.
Charles Oldt.
Here.
Roger Manu.
Yep.
Jenny Davis.
Here.
Who are the agenda? Are you guys okay with moving the, we got a pretty full agenda here? With moving the employee turnover rates to the next committee of the whole?
Not terminal.
Yep, that's under D.
Fine.
You guys okay with that?
Definitely.
Thanks. Anything else you would like to add or remove?
It looks like on the computers, we've got an older version of the agenda. There should be a number two under appointments and that just concerns the renewal of the body camera contract. The data, the documents in here just didn't land on the revised agenda here.
So that is four B?
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
Looks like the rest of us there.
Okay, item three, public comment.
Oh, sorry. We get some kind of correspondence from the Democratic Party about a replacement for.
We did, that'll be taken up at your annual meeting, which under the way the statute's written, that's where you make those appointments.
Oh, so it's a vacancy.
Next round of meetings, yeah.
Okay, alright, because I've gotten a call.
Anything else? Okay, we got a pretty full agenda, so I'm gonna try to move on, guys. Item three, public comment. Any public comment related to agenda items? In the room, any on the phone? Item four, appointments, Lieutenant Richard Strike Team Investigation Narcotics Group related to activity report. Come on up, sir. Is he coming?
Hi, I'm John Richardson, Lieutenant.
Want to have a seat?
Sure. At Sting Narcotics here in West Branch. We cover six counties, so we cover Aranac, Iasco, Ogumaw, Roscommon, Ascota, and Crawford Counties. Just to go over some numbers real quick. Ascot or Ogumaw County is our third highest so far this year in complaints, where we're currently at twenty-eight. Iasco County's at thirty-three and Roscommon's at thirty-four. We've taken a hundred and fifty-five complaints so far this year. Even though the complaint numbers are being pulled in Ogumaw County, it doesn't necessarily mean that's where the arrests are being being made, because a lot of our narcotics to our six county areas coming out of Saginaw. So a lot of the times, we work hand in hand with our sister team that is Bayonet out of Saginaw. Our confidential informants will go down to Saginaw to purchase the drugs and bring them back up. A lot of times, we do stop them either in Bay County or Aranac County, only for the reason, on their way back up, a lot of times, they like to off the drugs to their customers on the way, so we want to hit them before they start offloading all their drugs. So. Currently in Ogumaw County this year, we've had eight people arrested just in this county with eleven different counts. Five firearms seized so far in Ogumaw County. Altogether, we've had fifty-five arrests for the year so far with ninety-one counts with thirty-five firearms. Meth is the main drug we're seeing in the area. And so far, we've recovered seized one thousand thirteen point zero six grams with seventeen point six of those grams in Ogumaw County itself. We're also seeing a lot of cocaine, LSD, still seeing acid, mushrooms. So all those things are still around. So just because the arrests aren't being made here, we're stopping them before they get to the local county. Our, the CIs, our confidential informants, come from the county. We've had twenty-eight different complaints pulled just for Ogumaw County alone. So. We've also our main job is narcotics, but we also do other things such as surveillance. We help other agencies with cases. Just recently, we've helped Ogumaw County Sheriff's Office with parental kidnapping. With some surveillance, they just made the arrest on the suspect today. We've helped the West Branch Post with a large fraud investigation where a victim was brought it from hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars roughly. We did a controlled delivery of money and arrested the suspect when he came to pick up the money. That's still an ongoing investigation. We helped West Branch Post with a homicide over Niasco County, locating suspects and bringing suspects in for interviews. Homicide occurred in Iasco, but the body was ended up, the victim was dumped up in Ascota County. So that spanned a couple of different counties. So. Those are some of the things we do. We help, we're currently helping Ascota Township PD with a fraud case they have of a subject suspect using fraud passport cards to withdraw money out of people's banks, do an online fraud. So like I said, narcotics is our main thing we do, and that's mainly what we focus our time on. But we do help any agency that requests help either in surveillance, we'll help look for suspects. We have analysts and other resources available to us that we use to get information and go out and find these suspects and help either the county prosecutors or the local agencies with their investigations as well. So. You guys have any questions or?
Appreciate the information, I appreciate you being here. Commissioners, Commissioner Scott?
Can you get stats like that in print?
Yep, we will be getting a fiscal year end report here in October. Our fiscal year starts in October, and our office manager will print everything off. I can get a copy of those and send those out to you guys.
It'll be great, send them right to the investigator.
For the yearly, for the yearly status.
Gladwin County not part of your?
Gladwin County is part of Bayonet.
It is.
But we do, we will go in and work Gladwin if we get information there, Bayonet doesn't take it, we'll, we'll go work it.
Okay. How does, how does a complaint originate to get to you guys?
Either we get information of a suspect or subject involved in narcotics or trafficking. We'll do investigation, come up with enough to get a search warrant or a warrant. We'll make an arrest and decide to, if they're going to work with us as a confidential informant, that's one way. They may get stopped on the road by road patrol with narcotics and they want to work and try to work off their, their charges, and that's a different way. We do have some that come forward and we pay them, they don't have crimes, but they want to help the community and they'll, they'll come forward and we'll pay our CIs. And then we have other people that just want to help, that just give us information.
Okay. Oh. Firearms was probably in that list also because they make firearm.
So far this year, we got thirty-five firearms throughout the six counties.
Oh. How many, how many, can you tell us how many's on the team?
We have currently seven. Myself and the sergeant are full-time MSP employees. And then we have three troopers that do four-year terms now. And then we have a Roscommon County Deputy and an Ascota County Deputy. So we're currently sitting at seven. Crawford County has a millage where they're gonna hopefully get another deputy back to us. And Iasco County wants to come on board, they have the money, they just don't have the personnel yet.
They do. They ask.
Yes.
Anything else, Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Oldt.
Appreciate you being here.
Welcome.
You know, we know each other, obviously, it's on Sting. So thank you again. I know the last few months, we've seen here in Ogumaw County of a large increase of arrests drug-related here within our county. I know Tim, you brought that up to us and we've seen some statistics at our law enforcement committee meeting. And quite a large increase the last few months. Has there been something going on that's possibly a reason for that spike or?
It just goes in, it just goes in a circle and a pattern, just, it's just random. Like for a while, it'll be cocaine and then it went back to meth as the big drug. It just depends that a lot of it may be getting back to the county more before our CIs have information or before we control those buys to bring them back. We're getting information that the drugs are already here and that's when they're getting hit. Some of the people, we pull complaints, may not be arrested, because if they're going to work something off and get somebody bigger, we'll work with them. And they don't actually get, maybe not actually get arrested, so you may not see those stats come through the paper, because those are confidential.
Commissioner Manu, any questions? Commissioner Serwick.
Yeah, I'm just reiterate whatever Will said, appreciate you being here and we appreciate what you've done those.
Thank you for this.
More in quick.
And, and it's great that, you know, it's nice for you to be able to come to us every now and again, you know, and give us these stats, because there's been always been a year since we've really heard from anybody from Sting, you know.
Yeah, if I get an email, I can send you stats, we can do, you know, we, we usually will get like quarterly reports I can send out.
That's information, that's information we also can take back to our townships.
Right.
Commissioner Scott, did you have something?
No, the state police, they have a detective division too, right?
Right, they, at the post has two post detectives, so they'll handle anything that's like homicide, they handle major, major crimes there. We'll work in conjunction with them, they may work in conjunction with us. They're dedicated to the post area where our team is covering six counties.
All the counties that you deal with, other than Ogumaw, do they have detectives of their own?
Not every county, no. On our team, or you mean at the sheriff's department?
At the sheriff's.
Not every sheriff's department has a detective, no.
Good.
Anything else?
Well, just, just if there's, if there's any kind of big bust or something like that, and you're able to tell us something about it, it'd be great to get a report. Normally, we just hear, it's under investigation, we can't tell you anything, and we never do here at the result, you know.
A lot of times.
We're sitting in prison, and we still don't hear a result.
Right, and a lot of times, we don't do press releases just for the fact that we may be trying to get information from those people. We've had a couple of cases that came back to the general area that's linked to the cartel, that the drugs are.
Now, how are you funded?
We have a burn grant through the federal grant that we pay our rent. And main office supplies and everything is through the burn grant. MSP wages are through us, the state pays those, the deputies are paid by their counties. So, and then we get other contributions from counties and townships, we use that for further training, other equipment. MSP troopers all drive state-owned vehicles, where the local officers are two deputies, we purchase vehicles. They register them in their county and under their sheriff's office and they maintain all the maintenance, the gas, but we'll pay the initial fee for the, for the vehicle.
Okay, good, you're asking, you're asking us for some money.
Yep. Yeah, we send that out yearly, some counties and townships pay, some pay a portion, some don't pay anything, that doesn't affect who we cover or where we cover. We, we do full coverage no matter what, that's just contributions that help the team.
Okay. Would just like to justify the expense.
Right.
Okay, that's it.
One more thing, just, just to confirm, those two other county deputies that we currently have on Sting, those, those are full-time positions, correct?
Correct. They're full-time deputies, they're on the team full-time, they have jurisdiction, they fall under our umbrella, so they have jurisdiction in all, all the, the whole state of Michigan.
They turn into MSP.
Basically, they're, yeah, basically a trooper, they got all the same authority as a trooper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks for being here, sir.
Thank you.
Item B, renewal of body cams.
Is that the quote? No, yes. So just a quick review of the quote itself, you'll see that the bottom of that first quote, total of thirty-nine thousand seven forty-four for renewal of the contract, it's a three-year renewal, so that works out to thirteen thousand two forty-eight a year. If the county chooses to do the three-year renewal, they will throw in the batteries, that's that second quote. One thousand five hundred eighty-four dollar value that we would not have to pay, it would just simply come upon renewal of the contract. And I unfortunately can't answer any questions about how well they're working, I was hoping we'd have a sheriff's officer up here to do that, but I I know they get a lot of FOIAs for the information, so apparently it's doing its job in that regard. And I do know that the prosecutor's office has been able to access that as well.
Those FOIAs are granted, correct?
They're what?
They're granted, correct? When a request for FOIA off the body cam is granted.
They are, they have to, at that point though, go through and do a lot of redaction.
Yeah.
But yeah, they are.
Questions, guys?
This.
You guys are on the law enforcement.
Comes from law, comes from Road Patrol Millage pays for this?
Yes, the, the, well.
Well, that's who's wearing them.
That's who's wearing them, I did have a conversation with Paul about that, right now, they are on the subscription line item. Which, okay, you know, it's kind of like that, I would have probably put it under an eight oh one, a contract service, but you know, either way, but yes, that's.
But it's under Road.
Park it there, we can park it under three oh one if you'd like, but I think you're right, it belongs under.
Questions, Commissioner Oldt?
Would have questioned possibly for the under sheriff, the sheriff, but they're not here, so.
Have you guys, did you guys discuss this in the law enforcement, the law enforcement committee?
No.
We currently have, are the officers wearing body cams?
Yes. They all have them.
So, and I see this came this came to the sheriff's department that the sixth of August.
Yeah, they brought it, I think we actually did talk about it at the August law enforcement meeting, and the question was, because it's a renewal, did it have to come to the board? And the answer, we went into the policy, the answer is yes. It wouldn't have had to if it was the current contract and we were lowering the, you don't need to know the details, it'd have to come here.
It's a renewal, yeah. It's a renewal, it's a new contract.
It's an extension of a current, yes.
It was on the agenda in August?
No, Paul brought it to the meeting and just brought it up at the last minute, and I said, well, wait a minute, let's review the policy to find out what we have to do.
Okay.
So that's why it's coming now.
Commissioner Serwick, anything?
I don't remember.
Commissioner Manu. How long have they had these body cams, you remember, it's only been a couple of years?
It's been since ARPA, so we've got the first round of them with ARPA dollars, so within the last two years, I would say.
Well, it's, it says here, the pricing summary, year six, year seven, year eight.
Yeah, I don't think it's been that, that long.
I think that we got those when I was on the board previously.
Do you?
I believe, I, yeah, I, I think we did, I think we used.
Three years, one, that'd be three years ago or four years ago.
Yeah.
Because we were talking about, you know, I'd just like to hear how valuable they've been. Because it was for safety of our officers along with. Correct.
All sides.
Correct.
I don't have.
It's on film.
We have to.
Bring it up for resolution.
Okay, you guys good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, item five, let's go your twenty-twenty-six budget draft, budget final review.
And the first page of that document, you see all of the changes that were made since that first draft was brought to you on August seventh. Good news is, it all fits on one page, but.
Yep.
One of the one of the entries that you see here, it's appropriations dollars, we, during this time, we're able to, through equalization, get the final rollback numbers on property taxes and we're able to adjust the revenues based on that. The rest of this is something primarily, it's been discussed here at some point or other, there were some changes to the CPL that were in there that after Brett got into the budget, realized there were some additional expenses that we had to deal with. And down on the childcare fund and on the friend of the court adjustments that are on top were discussed when the judges were here. The rest of it, they added postage expense for animal control, it was just something that was overlooked, so it was put back in. The very last item came from a conversation that we had here about the commissary funds, so in that case, the hundred thousand's been marked, earmarked right now for vehicle, for the transport. There's one other thing that we were talking about the last meeting and that concerned the CAC, the Children's Ambigacy Group Assessment Center, okay? The thought was moving five thousand dollars out of the allocation, a friend of the court and putting that into the CAC allocation. Just want to confirm that's what you want to do and I'll add that to this list and make that change.
And then Commissioner Scott had also brought up the fund balance for the, the very large.
Where I brought up, taking it from the fund balance of probate court or rent accord or whatever, Judge Williams.
But you had also talked about, because they have such a large fund balance of moving fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, at the last meeting, you were pretty adamant about that.
Yeah. I thought it would be a good idea, and I think leaving four hundred thousand there is ample enough. And I think that could take care of a couple of different things, maybe, maybe even staying here. Take a little of that.
About what you gave.
Hold on, guys, go ahead, Commissioner Manu.
Oh, out of the opioid fund last.
Right.
Oh.
When that, when that invoice comes out, we'll do the same.
Commissioner, what's it?
Well, I just wanted to make comment that I agree with Commissioner Scott regarding the fifty thousand from the fund balance of the friends of the court and then the additional that we agreed, the five thousand for the children's.
Yes.
Right? And then I would imagine, and we can talk about it next Wednesday at the opiate settlement, but I mean, obviously, at the end of the day, it's our decision here, but I think that worked out well last year for the ten thousand or staying out of there.
Then up near the top here, you're going to change this increased sheriff's office memberships to include body cam? Take it out of three oh.
Um, yeah, I think I'm going to take it and not do it as a subscription, but as contract, because I really think that's where it belongs. I understand the thinking, how it went to subscription, because this thirty thousand is an annual fee. But it's really a contract more than it is like a magazine subscription would be.
Right.
But yeah, that, that'll go into the two fifty-nine. And just to clarify, on the friend of the court capping that fund balance of four hundred thousand, just so that you're not alarmed, the way that's going to work is that the allocation that goes from the general fund to the friend of the court fund will be reduced by whatever that difference is, and then they will use that fund balance to make up. So that would be anything over four hundred thousand is what they would use to make up whatever that difference is.
Okay.
So it's just, it's going to happen that way, but there's just a certain way, we got to make the math work so that the auditors can follow it.
Okay.
Can you explain the first, I'm sorry, were you done?
No, yeah, yeah.
Increased rate transfer to general fund of balance funding for secondary road patrol?
Right, so the secondary road patrol will be moving forty-two thousand six hundred eighty-four to the general fund. And that's the difference between the, the amount coming from the state for the secondary road patrol and then the actual cost. So in other words, the state offers everything up to a short forty-two thousand six hundred eighty-four to cover that position. And remember, it was reduced quite a bit this last year.
The funding was coming from the from the millage.
Right.
Right, okay.
So you said state?
Yeah, so the secondary road patrol has a grant, you'll see that in the general fund line item. I wanted to get something, but yeah.
Patrol, I guess I'm, that's why I have secondary road patrol.
Secondary road patrol is a different function.
Yep.
And, but it's a road patrol function, no matter how you slice it for, for how we see it, so the road patrol millage fund will make up for that balance, so we get the full deputy and not a three-quarters time or whatever that would work out to on the grant.
Okay. You have further questions?
No.
Comments?
I'm completely familiar with all secondary road work, so I understand it.
Item five, five to elected officials and at low employee wages. Well, I had a conversation, go ahead, Tim.
Well, that piece that I handed out was right on the top, the one that, that looks like this. For every commissioner that provided a number, you've got that average, but that worked out to be on the far right. That first column right next to it, the current salary is exactly what it says, so this is what the wages are currently for the elected officials. Again, there's, there's, you're not, because we did this exercise, you're not committed to this, but this gives you, I think, a more focused idea of where your colleagues were all thinking, when they put their numbers down, and again, this is the average.
Okay.
You want to go from there?
So Tim, with them, that, that did make some of them different, I guess.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't a, when, when you received comments from the commissioners, I guess, was there different raises for different positions?
Yes. So in one case, it was a percentage increase to each. One case was one of the percent aspect, two commissioners had one of the percentile columns, they weren't the same one. And in one case, they weren't all the same percentile, there was, you know, one that was carved out for different. And then a fourth commissioner was not even following any of these, but it's just a flat rate for each one in the ballpark of where all these percentiles were, but not consistent with each. So taking all those, merging them together, we come up with that column on the far right.
I guess I'll speak first, I, I did a lot of pondering on this, I even did a little bit of research on this, I, Roscommon County recently did something very similar. I, I, I'm struggling with the differences now, just because we have uh, some elected officials that are the same pay, what I recommended to Tim is a five percent increases this year to everyone, that includes elected officials and unelected officials, just because this was getting so complicated. Those percentages, I, I like the information, don't get me wrong, but I think they were extremely confusing and I, I just with a five percent increase, that puts us a little over the, from the calculations that I did, that puts us a little over the fiftieth percentile, so I, that was what I recommended this year, and then we could reevaluate next year, I think five percent's a pretty good wage across the board increase. You know, cost of living is typically two and a half percent, I believe. I, I think looking at this is going to cause some trouble. Because some of them increases are much bigger than other ones. I would like it to keep it fair, even though I understand there are definitely elected officials and department heads, some that in our, my personal view, I guess I'm just going to speak personally, that may do an outstanding job, maybe, I don't know where to go here, we see more of, we hear more from, participate more. Maybe their departments flow much better. I, I, I'm in favor of just doing a five percent across the board, we're in a good financial state right now, we're headed there. I'd like to reevaluate again next year, so Commissioner Scott?
Well. With, last time we did it, it was five years ago. And we did a flat rate across the board and everybody got the same flat rate. So it was not percentage-based, and you had different levels of, of, you had different levels of salaries. So that if you're talking fair and equitable, then flat rates were not fair, because if you had a higher rate than somebody else, then you only got what they got. What the lower person got, instead of five percent, say. Because the percentage at, at a, at a higher rate is going to be a higher amount. So I, I did kind of a high-bred thinking of it and took what I, and I started compounding. These people have been, these people have been sitting waiting and helping us for the most part, helping us get through all the financial stuff, so I started taking and compounding and, and, and it raises as if they would have got them. So take a, take a year, take a number and then plus, plus a percentage, and then write that down, go the next year, take the, take that for that number and add three percent, just like it it would be a compound or three, I, any, any percentage, it wouldn't matter. And then compound it, compound it, compound it, and then take a look at what it would be in twenty-six. Well, I didn't try to, I didn't try to make it merit-based. But I gotta tell you, it was very, very difficult not to. Um, in, in a couple of situations. I, I'm the one that brought it up about feeding the, the information to Tim to come up with an average, because I figured it would just be an option if we were just sitting around here just throwing numbers back and forth, so I, I'm not I'm not totally disappointed with these numbers, but I, I'm not overjoyed with these numbers, so. But I'm willing to compromise.
Commissioner Oldt?
Well, I'm just going to be one hundred percent transparent with, you know, where I stand. I did make an error, first off, tend to you, for some ungodly reason, the drain commission. Where, where I went, I went, and I tried not to use merit, but at the end of the day, we have performance, but then also you have to think about if the position was filled by someone else, we want to be in a competitive position. I've been battling with these people, I've been working hard with the majority of our stakeholders, they, they care about their job, they work extremely hard. I've been battling with these people, I've been working hard with the majority of our stakeholders, they they care about their job, they work extremely hard, we have a couple of them here tonight. You know, they've waited around, stayed with it, you know, waiting for us to start making some good solid decisions, get financially sound, which we still have a ways to go, but we've made some good improvements. So back to the drain commissioner part, Tim, I I said it, I was at seventy-five percentile for everyone besides the sheriff. The drain commissioner, I wouldn't be at, I've never even heard from our drain commissioner. So I would be, I made an error on that, so drain commissioner would be at the fiftieth along with the sheriff, and then I had everybody else at the seventy-fifth percentile. So that's exactly where I'm at, these people deserve this, it's, it tended the numbers, it gets us competitive, we need these people here. Um, in order to continue this success that we have, again, we have a long ways to go, and we need these stakeholders to stay with us and keep this momentum rolling. That's where I'm at.
Commissioner Surratt?
Oh, I went about it. I said fifty-fifth percentile for everybody except the prosecutor, who I think is sorely underpaid, and said, let's go with a seventy-fifth percentile for the prosecutor and assistant prosecutor. Um, that was my line of thinking, but you know, Jenny, I I just did some quick calculations on your five percent thing, and I I like it. I, you know.
Five percent.
Again, but I still, I still think the prosecutor attorney and the assistant prosecutor are woefully underpaid, you know, I would definitely be willing, I would encourage us to possibly give them more than the five percent if that's the direction that we're headed in. Um, you know, and I I look at these averages that the Tim gave us, you know, I, I've got a real problem when the proud, an attorney, assistant prosecuting attorney is gonna make just five thousand dollars more than the sheriff, and I'm not throwing stones at the sheriff, but I mean, you got somebody that's got a law degree.
Has to. Has to have a law.
Exactly, yeah, and anybody can be sheriff, anybody can be elected sheriff, so it doesn't require, not, again, disagreeing anybody that is currently in that officer has been, because they've all come from law enforcement background, but you don't have to have a law enforcement background to be elected sheriff. You know, so the rule is that there's no specific qualification for that office other than the fact that you can't be a convicted felon, you know, so, um. Again, I just think that the prosecutor and assistant prosecutor are woefully underpaid, so, but I like your percentage, for the rest of, I mean.
Where it puts us was fifty, a little over the fifty percentile, what I really recommend, it was five percent this year, ma- four percent next year, or five percent again next year, that puts us even closer, but making this huge jump, I I don't like these numbers at all, making this huge jump in one year and and seeing these, I mean, you got, you guys just talked about both, no, the shoes, I'm gonna say specifically the sheriff, there's a twelve thousand dollar raise there, when we've got the clerk who sits at every meeting, it's seven o'clock at night with a six thousand dollar raise, like that doesn't make any sense to me.
Comment.
Yes.
Um, can you go back again about, cause I, I'm trying to really follow this, so you're suggesting um, one of this, a segmented five percent? Then next year, another five percent?
I mean, I I'm I'm up for a discussion as far as, I don't think, I don't wanna make a decision as far as for sure next year, but I'm definitely up, that is um, one of my uh, um, geez, I can't even think, boards that I sit on, they, the negotiations just took place, and they did a three-year contract, five percent this year, four percent next year, and three year, the next year, three percent, which is fantastic. Um, I would like to start at five percent, I agree, people have been waiting, they're under, their their salaries are are low, but a five percent raise, remember, we have to go back to our constituents, we're in a good financial state right now, we're headed there. Five percent raise is is good, um, my employees got two percent, not specifically mine, but for for the company that I work for, so I yes, that is what I'm I'm requi- I'm recommending at at this time, um, again, I I don't think it puts us where we want to be, um, I am up for discussion again next year. But I think five percent in one year's.
And we could see where we are financially, I mean, just because we're we're in a, moving in the right direction, doesn't mean we need to spend it all now.
Correct.
We can reevaluate where we're at next year, and if if it works out to five or six or seven, you know, we're we're moving in the right direction, so.
Five percent, I think, is the highest I've seen since I, and maybe I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, since I've been in office. I don't think there's been, I I agree, there was a flat rate, but I've got it figured, right, five percent, and that's for, I'm I'm asking for everybody, five percent for all of the elected officials, department heads.
Well, one thing I look at is is duties and responsibilities. I don't take the average employee that works here and compare it to a department head. If an average employee gets three percent, I think on a department head should get more. That's the way I feel, and maybe because I came from management background and greedy, and uh, maybe that's the way I think, but um, no, to say, well, workers get this and workers get that, yeah, well, they they come to work, they put in their time, and they go.
I don't disagree with that.
Uh, I I can tell you that as a, as a manager, you're thinking of it just like commissioner, you go home with the job and you think about it and everything else, I mean, we did all these tables at home, not during business hours.
New question.
Go ahead.
Explain to me again then where you're currently at.
Currently at?
For for where you'd like to see commissioner, what is that, five percent?
Probably a little higher than.
I think Commissioner Surratt's at five percent.
For the most, for the most part, a little higher than than the average right there. And uh, for most everything. For most everything, I'm not gonna say everything.
So the, our commissioner average we have in front of us right here.
Yep.
You're a little higher.
Yep.
Because the five percent would be the average, obviously, we have here would.
It would be lower than that.
Quite a bit lower.
Quite a bit lower.
Yeah. I'm more, um.
You're gonna be half, you're gonna have, you're gonna be halfway in between.
Yeah, I'm more on Commissioner Scott's level.
I say let's take two years to get there, we don't have to get there now, Commissioner Mahou.
Well, I I believe it should be straight across the board, we can't pick and choose who we're gonna do and who we ain't, or how much, or any of that, because we don't understand their jobs, I mean, I understand, Mr. Surratt knows what the sheriff does pretty close, but the rest of us don't, and uh, yeah, if we're gonna do this, it's it's gotta be straight across the board.
So what do you recommend?
And I believe the five percent, if it's doable, okay.
Are you in favor of five percent?
Yeah, if we've got the money, we can do it.
Mister uh, what's he?
Um, this is the first time I've been in this position for these individuals of our team, um, asking Tim, Tim, in the past, I know Commissioner or Mahou just said that he feels that it should just be straight across the board, in your past experience with these positions, um, not only here, I mean, you've been here a long time, but other words, is that kind of a typical thing, that it's always just straight across, you're you're not going from one department to the next?
Right, and I would say, well, beyond ninety-five percent of the time, over all my years, that's the case. It's uh, first of all, it assumes that that work's already been done, so that there's already been a base that's been established, and those uh, differences between the positions have already been taken into account, and we're just now adding to it. Um, you know, the simplicity of it is wonderful, everybody understands it, and Commissioner Mahou said, you're not picking and choosing, you're not making winners and losers, it's straight across the board. Um, so, yeah, most of the time, that's the case, now, um, as um, the chair has stated several times, I mean, this isn't the end of the discussion, next year, you you take another look at it, and if if we need to make adjustments for market, whatever, there's always the opportunity to do that, uh, but again, for the um, uh, layperson in particular, it's way easier to understand if there's one number that's applied across the board, and that's that.
Tim, is five percent a reasonable raise?
Yes.
Then then another question, then, Tim, using your history, how often does elected officials get increases to the base, base base?
Usually it's uh, right along the same line as every other employee, every every commission I've ever worked for has tried to make that uh, an either uh, you know, fair number's not the right word, a consistent number across the board, so again, you're not picking winners and losers, through collective bargaining, sometimes they're a little higher, a little lower, you know, whatever, there are other dynamics at play there.
In our case, then, it's every three years, that's our contracts.
But those three-year contracts usually account for what you're gonna do in year two and three as well, they're usually not.
Right, but the anniversary is three years. And the anniversary for elected officials now is five years. Not following. Well, the last time we did it to the base was five years ago. To elected officials.
They've gotten a lump sum since then.
I think we've done.
We've we've done, we've done, we've done, yeah, but nothing. Okay, well, the last time we made any judgment at all was that five thousand across the board was five years ago.
Yeah, comment.
Is that, can you verify, I I don't think that's accurate.
Let me see, I might be able to.
If not, I would just like the information later.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Wiltzy.
I will, so I'm on my second term, third year, and I feel pretty confident we haven't had any discussions regarding this, right, do, I mean, do you think?
I think we have.
That's right, you think we have?
Hmm.
We we usually do these resolutions right along with the budget each year, so.
Well, you you had a spreadsheet that showed like one percent.
Yeah. I'll say that quickly here, if my theory is right.
I don't disagree with the two of you guys are saying, I just don't think it's necessary to get there in in one year, would I like to get there before our term ends? Absolutely.
For fiscal year twenty-four, uh, the elected officials, it was a two percent increase across the board.
Twenty-four?
For twenty-four, in twenty-five, we did the lump sum.
Two percent in twenty-four?
Two percent was twenty-four.
Twenty-five was just the lump sum.
Of how much?
Seven fifteen.
Right, seven fifteen.
Could we get numbers, um, where we, where these would be at at like six percent, seven percent, just so we could see those differences?
Okay, so difference from what, you wanna see?
Like Commissioner David and Sir Brooke and Commissioner Mahou are, you know, all saying five percent, like to see what number, you know, what number would be bad if it was a six percent.
I I can certainly provide you with that, yes.
Just so we can see that number, you know, when you throw down, it's a little easier to see where we'd see that difference between five or six, and maybe we'd feel comfortable at at six, just just to look at it.
So right now, we got, do we have, where we, I I'm I'm in favor of, and I'm asking everybody, so then we can choose to move forward, conversation. I'm in favor with five percent, reevaluate this next year. Yes or no?
Yes.
Commissioner Surratt?
Yep.
Commissioner Scott?
I don't have any answer right now.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
Yeah, I don't need to know, but it's more.
Okay.
I guess.
So we got three, do you need that put on?
Cypher.
Can you get the information that they're requesting, but can you put the, do you need to put this, this needs to be put on for a resolution, correct?
That would be the absolute cleanest way to do that, because we're considering the budget itself, uh, so, um, but I can eat blanks in there, but give you tables that show you what five percent, and a half, six percent, and then we can fill in the blanks at the meeting, we don't have that.
That's fine.
And we are, this, this is for elected officials and at will employees, making that very, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
When he makes that pie deal.
Yep.
All the stuff.
Table, yep.
Payroll is like three quarters, and we're gonna make that bigger.
Yep. We are.
I mean, that's, we we get right down to it, that's our biggest, biggest fight, is it fast?
Comment.
Yep, hold on.
I'm just saying.
I make that big. That's, that's our, that's our budget. So that's all I had to say.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
Well, I was just gonna say, in in any business, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, your payroll is your largest expense, um, just so I don't forget, Tim, can you invite our drain commissioner to please come to a meeting, so we can just see him and sure you are, that he's doing?
Did you have something?
I do. I just did the five, six, and seven for three of our elected officials, the clerk, treasurer, and registered deeds, because they're all on the same thing. Five percent would be sixty-five thousand four sixteen oh five. Six percent would be sixty-six thousand thirty-nine oh six. Seven percent would be sixty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and seven cents. So it gives you three. I didn't do the math for the, for the other ones, I just, because that was the easy one to do, because I covered three of them right off the top.
They're all on the same.
Okay.
Right.
Item five B, consideration of audit proposals.
Okay, I prepared a memo that uh, co-author but treasurer and the clerk. Um, after listening to the presentations uh, from the firms and reviewing the proposals, and this is strictly um, our position, is that we would encourage you to consider uh, awarding that agreement to the Maynard Castor, Casterson. Casterson Fund. For the simple reason that in our opinion, collectively, we all agree they were definitely head and shoulders of terms of the depth of what their firm can offer, uh, beyond just doing the audit. Now, there is a uh, more asterisk that I put on there, is there's that additional cost for the journal entries, and that would kind of condition that on our be able, our ability to be able to negotiate that down uh, considerably, uh, because at two hundred dollars per entry, that could get very expensive very quickly, and I don't think we want that hanging out there. One comment that was made by one of the presenters was that anybody that you've heard from, uh, in in response to the RFP is capable of doing the audit, and that's one hundred percent true. It's just coming down to what is the depth of the resource that that comes to the table. One item that the Maynard firm did not mention is their participation with the uh, trial court alternative funding project, they're actually heading that up on behalf of the Supreme Court, uh, getting all the data around and coming up with recommendations on the funding formulas between the states and the counties uh, for future uh, time, and expect that report's probably gonna be done here by the end of the year. Uh, but that gives you an idea just how deep they are into county government and their knowledge of the counties. Now, that being said, you know, the Raymond firm, again, had a very good presentation here, they have a very good reputation across the state, also has a pretty deep bench when it comes to things that go beyond just the audit, uh, personnel, experts who can advise us on best practices and how to approach any of the other challenges we might be faced with. The uh, um, I never remember their uh, name, I think it's Raybauer, was it, was uh, uh, on Zoom, um, was very disappointing, to say the least, um, they pretty much said, well, what everybody else said is right, and you know, we put our number in. Uh, the firm that presented first out of Rose City, again, capable, can they do the audit? Yes, they can put together and audit, but their bench didn't seem to be as deep as the other two. So that's just where we are with our recommendation to you, you heard the presentations, you've uh, seen a lot of the numbers back and forth, you know, the choice is clearly yours, and I wanna emphasize, there's not a wrong choice. You know, of all the firms that are on here, they can all do the audit, so it comes down to what what, you know, type of service do you want, um, you know, from your auditor?
Commissioner Wiltzy?
I really appreciate you guys getting together and putting this together. Obviously, I support your guys' cause and what you're doing and your knowledge at at this, and especially, we're our treasurer, and obviously, this is who you feel is best. Um, county administrator, also controller, um. I mean, I, I take this with a lot of weight, so I I appreciate it, and you know, I guess I'd be ready to move this to next week.
To what, what firm are you looking at?
Oh, who'd they recommend?
Okay, Commissioner Scott?
Well, I've been, I've been on the same page right from the get-go, uh, I think Maynard Costerman is the best, Castrian is the, is the best uh, best choice. I understand it's a little more money, but sometimes you pay a little more to get the better service. I was very impressed with Mr. Taylor, and he has been here to the county before when he worked for the state, and I think that connection would be very advantageous for us, so I've been right there.
Tim, where are these guys located?
Lansing.
Commissioner Mahou?
Uh, I was impressed with the ones from Rose City, for the simple reason they pay taxes here, they work here, and they explained to us if they were shorthanded, they had people in Alpine that'd help. And the other two firms, as far as I was concerned, the fourth.
And the other two firms, as far as I was concerned, the fourth firm was the most trustworthy. You weren't gonna stump that dude. He was, he knew what he was doing. He told us anybody could do it. At one time, he was brand new. And he was understaffed. He told us he had twenty five people that could work. He could rotate them out. He was a very, very intelligent person, I believe. But the other one, they're here. And I've talked to two of my townships. And they said the people are great. If you question them, they're back with you within ten minutes. They don't mess around. So you gotta support the people to support you, is my theory.
Commissioner Surrick?
I agree with the recommendation of clerk and the treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you know, they're very familiar with, you know, they did our internal controls, and they tightened things up a lot for us when they did those internal controls. So they're familiar with the county, knowing with the operation, um, and I believe that the input from the clerk, the treasurer, and the administrative controller.
I.
You can listen to.
I, I, you know, the internal controls audit, I, I think there's pros and cons of that. I agree, they do, they do now have some familiarity with the county. Um, there was three out of the four that I obviously thought were the top three out of the four, uh, hands down. Um, I did reach out to Mills Township, two of their board members, and, and asked them as far as, because Mills Township is very, very large. Um, the firm in Rose City has been doing their audit for an extended period of time. I asked them if they had any issues, any concerns. And it was very quick responses of no. They said if you call them, they respond quickly. They have had no issues with, um, having the manpower to complete the audit. Um, I asked them, I, I told them that they did come here and, and give us an audit, and I'd ask them if they would recommend them, and everybody that I spoke with said absolutely. So I, I am struggling with this a little bit. I, I appreciate these recommendations. I think they definitely have to be taken into considerations. Um, but I am struggling a little bit because I do think we really need to work on trying to stay local, and, and I don't think this firm in Rose City has, has had an opportunity. Uh, you know, I agree, their interview was a, a little bit maybe weaker than, than, than Maynard's and the other, uh, firm. But they also do do another county. Um, was Sheboygan, you know?
Steel.
Steel.
Yeah, there's road commissions.
Uh, it, so they do have quite a bit of experience, and again, Mills Township is the, 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 the largest township in our county. Um, and they highly encourage them. So you, you, you got three here that's saying yes to Maynard, so you gotta put it on for a resolution, but I, 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 my vote again is, is to stay local, to give them opportunity. We always have an out if we're not, not, uh, pleased.
I've come.
Go ahead.
Um, I've enjoyed listening to all of you on this, and something I have put some thought into, and also being my district at Mills Township. I've sat through the audit presentations from them, and, and I know they've always been pleased with their service. I do agree with the fact that I think it is important that we can stay local as much as possible. Obviously, this is a very important topic, and we definitely know Maynard Castrian, you know, I think would do a great job, but listening to you guys, it, it kind of make me think a little bit more about this. Um, I'd just like to ask, uh, Karen and and Breck, have you guys done any work with, um, the company here out of Rose City? Um, and then can I ask you guys, who was your number two?
Do you want me to go first, Breck? So yes, I have worked with that firm. It's always been, uh, pleasant and professional, um, because they do township audits. They reach out to me for information when they're at the townships. I had no issues with them. Um, they're always, like I said, pleasant, professional. I've never had any issues with them.
Do you think you'd be able to work well with them, and if we went to go with them, that you would be?
Absolutely, absolutely. Any of the three that were here in person.
Yeah, Mr. Plaid Shirt, I thought was the aim.
Three that were here in person, I thought interviewed very well. Um, again, they do a lot of our townships. I, I've worked with Claudia the most. Um, she was one of the people who goes to table. Um, again, professional, courteous. I would have no trouble working with any, any of them. That would be fine. I can certainly appreciate hiring local and giving them an opportunity. I understand that absolutely.
I appreciate that, Breck.
Same thing. Um, we, I've never met them in person. I just, from talking to the townships, I have heard, I called Claudia multiple times. Um, the same, the, any of the three, any of the top three are fine. Um, I wouldn't have a problem at all with any of them.
Yeah. Well, I really appreciate you guys' recommendation, but sometimes you just gotta hear some other things, and I have put a lot of thought to this, and again, now going back thinking of, you know, the consistent, um, that work they've done at Mills Township, and there's been nothing but positive. So I'm actually gonna change my decision, and, um, I think to go with the local firm out of Rose City.
Well, I've been an advocate for all the time I've been here about local, local, local. You guys have heard me the record, record playing all the time. But I've had to, I've had to hire people for multiple people, uh, interview multiple people for one in, for one job. And it's, and it comes down to what's in it for me, what's in it for the company? I mean, what depth, I mean, i- is that, what person in there, you know? Um, same with, well, our bidding for our projects have been so narrow that we haven't even had to take choices before, you know? The only one contractor answers all the calls, so we don't even, we haven't had to worry about that. Um, and that would have been pretty tough to have, like, say, four local builders in here. And then which one do you take? Because they're all local, you know? Um, no, I, I'll, I'll just stay with mine, because I think that's the best for the county.
Commissioner Surrick, anything?
They can all do the job, just like.
Yeah, I, I agree. Well, I just think the depth and their familiarity with where we're at, and, uh, that's, I'm still sticking to it, so.
Good night, Jack.
Go ahead.
Because I do like the fact that Mayor Castrian, if I'm saying her name correctly,
Yeah.
was here when I first took office and saw how
So much work there was.
Yes, the lack of disciplined work that was missing in that office. And they were there to see where it was and see where it is now. And I liked that idea that they've seen how far we've come and the improvements that we've made. And the fact that they have Rod Taylor, who's on the forefront of the Supreme Court, court changes, and having that knowledge and that network of insight for things that are coming down the road for us.
I think that would have been a little bit of an edge over our local.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, again, I'm gonna stay with a local, and if it doesn't work out, if you guys aren't pleased, pleased, um, we, we have an out. Uh, we can, we can, even though we're signing a contract, we can always opt out after a year if we're not pleased with them. And if I would have heard anything negative, um, I did not, and I asked numerous people in the townships that they do audit for, audit with, so.
Well, but even if we ask the customers of Mr. Plaid Shirt, they're, they'll probably tell us they do a really good job.
You might be surprised.
I'm gonna disagree with you. Typically, you hear negative from, from the general public, and you know that better than anybody, so. Especially when it's.
None of us were impressed with his presentation, but I'll bet you his customers will tell you that they do a good job. But, you know, it's like Tim said in the beginning, they can all do the job. They're all in the, in the business. They can all do the job. I just gotta make the best choice I can for the county.
That's fair. Commissioner Holtsey, did you have something else?
Well, I mean, obviously, I have made a change here. I just want to make sure, because again, this is you guys, and you're a big part of this call the revival, whatever we've done here at the county, but we've done some really great things, having to make hard decisions, but going in the direction we absolutely have to be to create some sustainability. You guys know where I'm at now, and where Commissioner Mayhew and Commissioner David is. You guys feel confident that this firm, I feel confident they do, you guys do, they'll work with them well and do the job that's needed for the county.
Of course, in turn. Okay. Uh, consideration of project change orders. Secure entrance.
Change order concerns, um, front entrance, uh, job that we've got that just about to get underway. As they were, uh, doing some of their preliminary work, there was notice of a concrete platform right outside the door that has, um, risen, has, has come up a little bit out of the ground. And there's evidence that this isn't the first time it's been noticed, because it's been shaved down, looks like more than once. And this time, the door that is on the east side, so you got a west door and an east door. The east door you cannot open because the concrete is up that much. So this change order would correct that. It would take that, uh, current concrete pad out, replace it, something a little bit more stable. And then we'll actually be able to use the doors. The total cost addition to the original proposal is five thousand eight hundred twenty dollars to do that. Um, that's a little bit over the contingency for that, uh, particular project, but the lighting project, uh, right now doesn't look, he's gonna use any of its contingency at all. So as far as it's all coming from the ARPA fund, it works out from a budget standpoint. You're not gonna end up going over on the four, four projects coming out of that budget.
Question.
Comments? Commissioner Holtsey?
Um, obviously, you said now we're gonna be at or over our contingency. Did you ask Jack, or if it was a project manager, you were talking about this, does he feel confident after now we've had this in the works for a while? I'm sure they're prepping, preparing to get, if he doesn't see any other reasons, there really should be anything else. Now, we all know times you, you know, until you get into it, but did you ask that?
Uh, I didn't, but the big component to that, uh, entrance out there was those windows, you know, working around that. They've already got those in, so that for me, at least takes away the biggest risk. The rest of it's gonna come down to the doors themselves, the new, uh, uh, push button, uh, to open the doors for, uh, accessibility, and then a little bit of work inside the lobby. Uh, but that's it. I would believe, at this point, with what they've done with the window project, if there was gonna be a problem, they would have found it already.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the secure entrance, Commissioner Surrick?
Nope.
Commissioner Mayhew?
No.
Commissioner Surrick, or, uh, Scott, okay. Window replacement, can you explain this, Tim?
Yes, this is a little more problematic.
Yeah.
Um, when the project was first being contemplated, before we put the RFPs out, I had our maintenance supervisor uh, not only pull the plans, but count the windows, how many windows do we have in the facility? And in the RFP, uh, we called out those numbers, and I forget exactly what it was, but there were fifty eight of a certain kind of window, and two of one kind, and four of another kind, and so on. Uh, as they got into the project and were finishing up the north side, uh, the, uh, project manager came to me and said, we are eleven windows short, and we need to add those in form of a change order. If there can be good news in this, it is that the ten percent contingency on this project alone, you know, still would have a balance, even after the sixty one thousand dollar change order. Uh, we had about a sixty six thousand dollar contingency built into this. So that at least is good. We've got the funding to do it. Um, how you miss eleven windows? I, I can't give you an explanation for that. They're just, uh, just isn't one. Uh, the idea is that you go through and you, you try to make these specs exactly, exactly, as exacting as you can, so that, uh, uh, contractors know what to bid on, and they're all bidding on the same thing. Uh, have we gotten another bid, but another contractor have noticed that or made a different count? I don't know. We'll never know. We only got the one bid. But I have to say that, you know, I kind of pride myself in making sure those RFPs include everything, and so it's a little bit embarrassing even for me to now have this turn up as a problem at the last minute. But as I said, all that being said, the overall, uh, cost for this is within the contingency, uh, and I don't think we want to, uh, miss eleven windows, the final project.
Commissioner Scott?
We want to get it done. And, I mean, I, I have, I can't believe that somebody missed eleven windows. Don't think it's not that damn big.
Commissioner Holtsey?
Guess the next time, count something, I guess we'll send somebody else.
To be absolutely honest, um, I heard about this at our budget meeting was brought to us. So immediately I talked to Tim about it after our budget meeting, and I was mad as a hornet. Um, it's, it's unacceptable. I understand people are imperfect. We make mistakes. I make mistakes. Eleven windows? So I asked him, I said, I want to know why that mistake was made to this level. I know Tim has talked with him, but this is unacceptable. I understand there's contingency money, but one hundred percent unacceptable. We need to learn from this. Learn from this to make sure in the future, when we're doing projects, this type of stuff doesn't happen again. Again, hundred percent unacceptable.
Commissioner Surrick?
I can understand missing a few, but eleven, that's insane. But as Tim said, the good news is the ways there are contingency. We need to get it done. It is what it is, so. Let's approve the change order.
I've been told how great they look by the people in the public. They're really happy with that, but yeah. What, they miss the whole floor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe as I'm thinking about the one wing, yeah, that's about right.
Is it the back wall? Or is it, is it, or is it just all?
Can we tell what, what?
Aggregate.
What windows were missed, size, what? Like, I guess I don't.
I, I think that would, we would have the person who counted them in here. We might be able to figure that out, uh, speculation otherwise.
I don't want to waste their time.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Who's gonna put the project behind, or they're gonna say?
No, it's not. In fact, um, they got some momentum going. I'm really still today very impressed at how quickly they were able to do like that whole north side. I think they did.
No, I know they've been going great guns. I just wondered if there was gonna be a problem with getting the windows from the manufacturer in a timely manner.
They didn't believe there's gonna be any problem there.
Good, good. That is my big concern was, oh, God, it were gonna be in December.
Our deadline was December next year, so they, I believe will be still, uh, be on the schedule they had, and, and certainly by probably let's say about mid-October, they'll be done.
Good, great.
I mean, this is a lot of money, sixty one thousand dollars that wasn't accounted for. I, does this count? I, I know this is not a, uh, well, this is a union employee. Is this go for, or like a write-up, like, kind of like a written warning, so we have?
Yeah, I'll notify you at the final disposition on it.
Again, and just so that there's some, some, uh, paper trail here, if anything comes about more in the future, this hopefully is a learning curve, and we'll move forward, but if this is a continuation of issues, then we have, we have some backup.
Yep.
So. Agreed? Revenue sharing resolution.
She's got a boilerplate resolution for Michigan Association of Counties, asking our state officials to uh, maintain the revenue sharing budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six, uh, as was originally shared with us. Uh, right now, you've got, as you're probably painfully aware, three different budget proposals floating around in Lansing, one from the Senate, one from the House, and one from the governor. The House budget is the one that has proposed a significant reduction in revenue sharing to the counties. Uh, they, uh, Michigan Association of Counties believes, uh, counties going on record, uh, employing our officials in, in Lansing, not to cut, will make a difference. Their final decision, I maybe am not as, uh, confident that that'll be the case, but nevertheless, they've asked for all of our counties to consider this.
Comments? Commissioner Scott?
I, I don't know why I gotta tell the guy to make sure our, our county's covered, but I'll go along with it, but they should know that. That probably should be one of their primary things in their head. I'm serving the counties that I get votes from.
Commissioner Holtsey?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Scott. I know I've reached out to, you know, our, our state rep, Podley, and Senator Hoshianga, and and obviously, they realized that it would affect, you know, these rural counties. I mean, this is the last thing we re, we need right now, and it's substantial money, so. This is just something that will help, but we need also to, uh, you know, let our residents know too, that if, if they would understand that this will affect them greatly as well, they should reach out to state, um, Representative Odeley and State Senator Hoshianga, and let them know that we need this funding. We cannot be going backwards. All this money that's wasted at the state, you know, and obviously, you see right now, there's three different budgets. Political system's an absolute mess. And they need to know that we, we need this money, rural counties, we cannot be going backwards.
Commissioner Mayhew?
I believe we should. I don't know if it'll do us any good, but, yeah.
Commissioner Surrick?
I agree that we need to do it. You know, it's, it is both Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Mayhew said, you know, you'd think that they would know, but we heard right from their senators rep that was here last. He said, it makes a difference if you send that kind of information to them, even though they're aware of it, it does make a difference. So let's do it.
Okay. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Surrick?
Nothing.
Commissioner Mayhew?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
Very tough decisions.
Very tough decisions tonight, but it went very well, I thought. This is the part, this is the part we're here, when you collect, collective people and together and. Different ideas and different opinions and, and. And this is how it works, this is how government works, and I'm glad to see we got a number of people on a Zoom call. Be nice to have a bigger crowd in the, uh, because I know that, you're big enough, yeah.
I'm big enough.
Yeah, but more people, more people, I got a couple, I got a foster township that fills the room. And that's, that's great, because they get to see how it works, you know? But this is how it works, and you get five people and you try to work something out and make it work, so. I'm proud to be on the board.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Uh, comments, not reports, I like to give some reports, Tim was part of some good meetings today, and we saw some really good information. Excited to report to everything, guys, but I'll wait till next Thursday, that's all I got.
I'll be gone October sixteenth, I will miss that meeting.
I may be gone sometimes. I'll have to check.
I will probably maybe miss twenty-third, unless I can come in on my walker.
The walker.
I'm getting a, get a saber for, so.
A little meat. Public comment, any public comment in the room? You have to come out up, sir.
I don't know if I want to.
Okay, any, any public comment in the room?
We'll listen to you.
Come out.
Yeah.
We may not agree, but we'll.
Okay, hold on, guys.
Absolutely.
Ken Schnautz, Churchill Township's supervisor.
There was a comment made a few weeks ago, last meeting I was here, about, um. A particular department head making only a couple dollars more than their chief mechanic. And it was kind of disparaging that we feel that this department head should make a lot more. But I'm here to tell you, with everyone I've talked to. I want that chief mechanic to be the highest paid and the most happiest person in the world, because. If I'm on his bus that he's taking care of, I want those brakes to work. If I'm in front of him in a car, I want those brakes to work. I want that machine, if I've got my, well, my mom's passed, but if I've got my mom on that transit bus. I want to know at February thirtieth, that when it's twenty below, that bus will get from point A to point B and not break down. So, I, I, you know, I've been a manager, plant manager, I've been department managers, and right now I'm just a peon off in the corner. Retired, actually, sort of.
With your chief P.
Yes, but I, um, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm chief P-don, so. Um, I, I appreciate being a manager, and you have a lot of decisions to make, but when it comes down to management positions. I'd rather have the guys on the floor actually doing the work, taken care of. Um, going to the five percent, that sounds pretty good to me, but I live on social security now. I'm looking at maybe two point four, two point three percent raise this year, and I had a two point three raise percent last year. The majority of the folks in Ogumaw County, population-wise, are only going to get a two percent raise this year. On their, you know, on their social security, and I don't think in private industry, and I don't know who's here in private industry. How many of these people are getting a five percent, um, raise? Uh, I'm all for it, I think they've, they've scrimped and they've saved and they've worked, and they've worked really hard, and I do believe they, they deserve a raise. But like I've said before, the optics, uh, there are a lot of people working in private industry in Ogumaw County. That aren't going to get a five percent raise, they didn't get a three percent raise last year, they didn't get a two percent raise the year before, because we've. Private industry is really struggling right now to maintain what they have. So, that, as far as the race, I have no problem with it, but remember, a lot of people aren't getting that kind of money this year. And, and their income, so you're doing really well if you give that to our elected and at-will employees. Um, third thing is, is we talked, um, two months ago about, um. Why are our departments going down to Costco or wherever down below and buying all their office supplies and what have you? Um, let's buy local, same thing with, um, getting the firm out of Rose City, let's deal locally. I understand that this other big firm is, has a lot of in-depth, has a lot of people, but they're down there. We have a firm in Rose City that can be here, we're just small potatoes to a bigger firm down in Lansing or Detroit or wherever it's at.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? We have a closed session, does someone want to make a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session according to MCL one five point two six eight C. Now, with, uh, stra, connected to the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
Tim, will there be, will there be any business afterwards?
No.
Okay. We have a motion to support.
Supporting.
Commissioner Mayhew? Roll call vote?
Any David?
Yes, Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Yes.
Rick Scott.
Yes.
Mark Surrick.
Yes.
Hey, we have a motion on the close session.
Jared, I'm positive.
Okay, I don't think anybody's riding a bus on third rule of the third year.
That's true. But, but you get my.
Motion to come back in the open session?
Yeah.
It sounded like you made one.
Where are you? Motion, oh, we did? We had a motion to come back in the clo, okay, motion to adjourn?
Yep.
For.
All in favor?
Aye, aye. Good night, everyone. Good night.